Now, we're going to go on to the regular board meeting. Which is the Cochise County Supervisor's Regular Board Meeting Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, ten a.m. The Board Supervisors Hearing Room, fourteen fifteen Melody Lane Building, G Bisbee, Arizona. Pursuant to A R S thirty-eight four thirty-one point zero two H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place fifteen minutes prior to the start of each meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion, possible action. May we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the republic which is to stand. One mission, I'm not, we need to follow, when we're in a meeting, it has to be followed. Thank you. Order a deletion of any item on this agenda as subject to modification at the meeting. The board may vote to re-suspend an executive session for the purposes of obtaining legal advice from the board's attorney on any matter of this about the agenda pursuant to A R S thirty-eight four thirty-one point zero three eight three. Roll call. Crosby is here representing District one, District two.
Supervisor English is still present, thank you.
And District three.
Supervisor Chad is here.
Thank you. Members of the public may attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling six oh two six one nine seven five one three, or eight 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 six eight zero six seven one four. Conference ID six nine three eight five nine zero three six pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero four three two nine two zero zero for direction. The board may permit, permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda to speak on an agenda item or during, during, or during call to the public. Please complete a return and return a speaker request form to the clerk of the board by nine a.m. the day of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated if the agenda is published. This means that some presentation material displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. Call to the public, we have two that are just a regular call to the public and just moving out here. And this, let's try. Radford Hyde, Mr. Radford Hyde, are you with us this morning, sir?
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, I'd just like to point out, thank you, that it takes about six to seven seconds. If you're calling in to unmute yourself before you're allowed to speak, so just so that the board is aware of that. Uh, this is Radford Hyde from Sierra Vista. I have a couple of comments. I keep having to express my appreciation for Tricia Giradet being the expert on the water issues in Cochise County and the San Pedro River. And I don't question her expertise on that manner, matter. But she keeps questioning my expertise on the matter of I T and cybersecurity. Um, and I'd just like to remind the, the board that in my estimation, I haven't seen any proof that there's one person who's ever regularly attended any of these meetings that has the background, education, experience, and certifications, and professional experience in I T and cybersecurity, and high-speed scanning, and hacking, and all of that business. So I suggest that people, before they criticize me about having wrong opinion about these machines that we're probably stuck with for vote counting and vote tabulation, that they need to stay in their lane. Uh, secondly, um, I want to, I want to applaud Supervisor Crosby for his comments at the jail district meeting regarding the potential constitutionality, uh, and the litigation going on about the vote on the jail district. So thank you for keeping that on the top of everybody's mind. I know that people keep wanting to ignore it, and I have a comment about that, which is if all of those people get hired, what's going to happen when the case gets overturned and that is ruled an illegal election? Um, so you're, you're probably going to be hiring people and then having to get rid of them. And that's probably not a good idea. I would suggest maybe waiting on, on all of that. Um, nobody's here criticizing the need for that, but the whole jail district business is just weird. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out, and I have a, a call to the public for an agenda item regarding the budget procurement policy, and I'll just speak to it now since I have a minute. Uh, I, I do not approve of that. I don't think that raising the thresholds on all of those purchases is a good idea because it removes eyes from expensive purchases. And I think we need more eyes on expensive purchases before you stop spending my money.
On that item, but you can come back on item number two and address that again if you so desire. How's that?
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Okay, next on call to the public, we have Ms. Tricia Jaradet.
Good morning, Supervisors. Tricia Jaradet from Sierra Vista. Um, I am going to comment on the election, but I'm, I'm not thinking of any one person in particular, so I'm not criticizing that. Um, I don't think I have. Um, when you get to items sixteen and seventeen, um, I hope you'll have some discussion for the public about the differences between um, the countywide J P pro tem and then this different thing where you're appointing a countywide roving J P pro tem, um, replacing an elected. I mean, that, they clearly are different because you have two different items. And just a little explanation, a little education would be great. And also I'd like to point out that item twenty-four refers to having an attached agenda, but I can't find it. Don't see any hotline. Um, I want to express my appreciation for the lack of drama around this year's election, except for the fake bomb scare. The canvas vote was uneventful, and I think I've only heard one speaker, maybe it was Radford, um, denounce our elections overall as fake or rigged. Knowing that the protesters two years ago were Trump protesters, I just can't help but think that those angry people were angry about Trump's loss in two thousand and twenty and blamed what they felt had to be a rigged system. This year, Trump won, so they're not so angry, I guess, even though it's basically the same voting system. I want to express thanks to Peggy Judd and Ann English for their decades of public service and wish them well for two thousand and twenty-five and beyond. For Ms. Judd, I know the past two years have been just awful on a personal level, and I hope your future will be more peaceful. And my thanks also to Richard Karwachka as well for his steady hand and demeanor as county administrator. Best wishes to all, and peaceful two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jaradet. Next, I, it appears that we have the consent agenda item. Madam Chad, would you care to make a motion for those?
Make sure how many there are. Eleven, okay. Mister Vice Chairman, I move that we approve consent agenda items number one through eleven.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. And Madam Judd, would you care to, uh?
Mister Vice, Mister Vice Chair, I move that we approve a new license application for a Class A bingo license submitted by Morgan Solis, located at seventy North Cherokee Trail, Benson, Arizona, eight five six oh two.
Is there a sound?
I'll second that. Are we going into a public, is this a hearing?
Absolutely. So there's a motion and a second.
Open the public hearing.
Next, we'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that wishes to discuss item number twelve, approve a new liquor license application? Is it, no, it's not.
It's a bingo license.
I'm sorry. Bingo. Okay, so I'm, I'm going to just read that again. Approve a new license application for Class A bingo license submitted by Morgan Solis, located at seventy North Cherokee Trail, Benson, Arizona, eight five six oh two. My apologies. Hearing no input for the call to the public, the call to the public, or correction, the public hearing is closed. And there's been a motion and a second, there's no further discussion. I call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. And number thirteen.
Mister Vice Chairman, I move that we approve second amended, second, I'm going to start over. Mister Vice Chairman, I move that we approve second amended non-exclusive lease agreement with Saint Patrick Roman Catholic Parish Bisbee for parking lot use by county employees and the public attending court proceedings effective January first, two thousand and twenty-five through January first, two thousand and twenty-nine.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second, Mister Karwachka, do you have comments on number thirteen?
I do, and thank you Supervisor Crosby, Supervisor Jed, Supervisor English. So this has been brought a couple of years ago was the Saint Pat's parking lot, parking's at a premium near the courthouse up on Melody, not Melody Lane.
Quality Hill.
Quality Hill. So, uh, we've entered into this agreement previously. Uh, they've run their parking warrant for private purchases. Uh, so we've decided to enter in a longer agreement that's beneficial for the county and the county employees. Uh, as you can see, it's a four-year agreement. There are increment increases, uh, the first two years there's not, but in the second and third year there are. Also, uh, we need parking spaces when jurors come, whether for the grand jury or for jury trials. Um, so that's an additional charge, and so we worked out an agreement for seven dollars and fifty cents per, per day. Uh, and that is set up for the next four years, so that will not be an increase. Um, and that happens every time either grand jury panel or there's a jury trial set. So that concludes my statements. I think we've had a good agreement and good partnership, given the location and the limited party.
So our, our citizens park there for free and our jurors, and we don't pay, but, but the county is, is leasing it and, and giving them a, a small payment.
Correct.
She will always use the parking lot.
Our county employees and people that come, uh, to the court as jurors don't pay, we pay as a county to the Saint Pat's. A private citizen that is just going there pays whatever rate.
So a, so a tourist or whatever.
Because now they, uh, charge for parking in those spaces.
Okay, well, thank you. And anyone should walk in that church and anyone who's been there should walk into that church and look at their stained glass.
Yeah.
Windows, it's fascinating.
They just redid it, I believe.
It's worth paying.
Okay, so that was item thirteen, and there is no further discussion. Therefore, a call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. And, uh, number fourteen, Madam Chair.
Mister Vice Chair, I move that we approve Department of Justice, D O J, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, B G A, Stop School Violence Grant to enhance the development and implementation of Behavioral Threat Assessment, V T A teams in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars, effective October first, two thousand and twenty-four through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second, we have Ms. Jackie Clay, school superintendent, here to address us and your approval, I think, because I, thank you very much.
Um, thank you, um, members of the board. Um, this grant right here that we're talking about is called the STOP Grant. This grant basically allows a continuation of our county school safety initiatives, an initiative that all of you approved two years ago when we did this new safety grant. It appears that there was a need, and there still is a need for our schools, especially our rural schools, for the support. But basically, this grant focuses on creating a safe culture in schools because students can't learn if they're not safe, they don't feel safe, and teachers can't teach if they can't keep their students safe. So basically, it's a three-year grant, nine hundred thousand dollars, and our four tenants are preparation, prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery. We are still working in collaboration with the, um, sheriff's office. And, um, our initiatives will include anonymous tip line and establishing behavior threat assessment team in county schools. We've already been working with Navigate Three Sixty, we've already mapped the schools, all schools are mapped, and, and we have, um, in fact, we've done some alarms so far to test all of our systems in the schools, and they're working. So what we're doing now is we're adding to, we're augmenting, and basically, we are evolving what we have done already. We're not doing this by ourselves, definitely not. We are working with the Cochise County Sheriff's Department and their care team. I'd like to bring your attention to prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery. I always say that prevention is, prevention and preparedness is before the bang. Before anything happens in a school, we like to focus on prevention, prevention and preparedness. If we do that, it may deter, deter any negative, any negativity that may happen in school, whether within the school or outside of the school. The response is the, during the bang. All right, we want, we want to stop that as much as possible. That's why we work a lot on the prevention and the preparedness, and of course, the recovery is what we call after the bang. All four of these are very important in school safety.
Uh, so we built this school safety model on best practices. We were fortunate enough two years ago to get the sheriff's office interoperability grant funding, which allowed us to, uh, work with the response, the recovery, and the, um, and the preparedness piece through the interoperability and the technology that we've been able to put into the school districts. Uh, this grant funding through, um, through the, the B J A STOP Grant will allow us now to focus more on prevention. And you can see up here how all of those things come together. The sheriff's office will continue to work with us in all these areas of the best practices of school safety for preparedness, response, recovery, and what this grant for is for, which is prevention. Uh, so with the funding, we will be getting an anonymous tip reporting line, which will be manned by the Sandy Hook Promise Crisis, Crisis Center, um, and will allow all of the school districts in the county to participate in that anonymous tip line. We will be implementing behavioral threat assessment teams with a train, the trainer, um, management program, which will increase the, um, longevity of the program, a case management platform, which will allow the school districts to manage the students that are identified as, um, at risk for violence or self-harm. And then also behavioral intervention specialists in our office that will help us support the schools in the training and implementation and the sustainability of the program.
That concludes our, um, presentation on the STOP Grant.
Are there any questions from the board?
I, I just wanted to, to say, I know you've seen, um, improvements from the initial, um, implementation of this, and and also say thank you to the sheriff's department for their, their cooperation and help with the schools. Um, their presence is very needed, especially in our rural schools, like you said. They are our, our police force, they are protectors of our children. And, um, I, I just wondered if, if there's anything you can say, it's public record when incidents happen, but not with students. So I'm wondering if, if you have an example of a success story, you don't have to tell us which school, um, something that you remember during the years that was.
Well, I, I would say we had a incident, we, we have a lot of school incidents, and we, we have a really great, um, communication system where if anything happens in any school that deals with any student, we get that, we get a phone call. And what happens is, we had, we had a couple of students, we had a student who committed suicide, unfortunately. And, um, the superintendent called, um, us, and we put all of the things in action that we have in place right now, where once we found, found out, we had the care team come in, we have every school in Cochise County, we have them on a WhatsApp. They knew what was going on, so everybody was in a ready position for that one school to say, whatever you need, our world has stopped for you. When we went to the school that, that Monday, you had teachers in tears, there was a lot of hugging and, and, and talking and, and, um, it was great, it was for the teachers and for the students, et cetera, et cetera. So this, this is basically one of the stories, the success stories that we have, where now the whole county, instead of the county being isolated and fragmented, we are one county moving, what's with together, when one person hurts, regardless of what school it is, in this whole county, everybody in the county, as far as the schools, and as far as the care team and the sheriff's office, we all know what's going on as soon as it happens, and we put, we have things in place.
That's a sad lovely story. Thank you.
Miss Clay, I wonder if you could, uh, tell us about the care team, uh, back, I don't know, maybe years ago now, we, uh, we heard from the sheriff's office, and maybe they hadn't named it yet, but it was going to be a mental health emergency response, is that what the care team is? Would anybody, if you can elaborate on it?
Oh, yes, and I'm going to have, um, my outreach manager, she's going to talk about that.
Yep, uh, so we work with the care team in several ways. Uh, the great thing about the care team is they have the certified mental health professionals on staff. And so what that allows us to do is to use our behavioral health intervention specialists, but when there are calls that require more, uh, services than our office can provide, uh, we, we team up with the care team. Uh, we do have a school-based crisis response team, which is what Dr. Clay was talking about earlier, and we do that in collaboration with the care team from the sheriff's office, so that we have the clinical oversight and also our behavioral intervention specialists. Uh, they work with us in all aspects of the school safety, um, the behavioral health piece, and also on our emergency crisis response team, just by giving us support. Uh, the other thing that happens too is inside the schools, we have our FERPA restrictions, and the care team is able to, um, in a school crisis with a student, uh, is also able to go, uh, work with parents outside of the school if there are some wraparound services that are, we can't provide from the, from the school.
Remind me of your name, please?
Cynthia Myers.
Myers, okay. And Ms. Myers, what is FERPA?
FERPA base, I, 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 I will have to look up what F E R P A is, but basically, it's the law that says that we cannot divulge any student information to anybody. Basically, it protects the student, the identity, et cetera, et cetera. So the sheriff or any non, non-school personnel cannot obtain information on students unless it's maybe a crisis. So FERPA protects the students and their identity.
Okay, so it's similar to HIPAA.
Exactly, exactly the same, yes.
Okay.
It's Federal Education's Right to Privacy Act.
Thank you.
That, that wasn't me.
Yes. You have so many acronyms.
There we go, let's see, um, the care team sheriffs, how about Navigate Three Sixty?
Navigate Three Sixty, I'll let you go ahead and do that. So Navigate Three Sixty is the technology that we chose for the sheriff's office interoperability funding. Um, and that is what we're using for the nine-one-one panic buttons that are inside the schools used on laptops and phones, um, which is synced directly with C COM. And when that button is pressed, all the interactive maps and everything that we spent money on having Navigate Three Sixty come out and do, um, they all come up uh, for law enforcement as they're responding to the emergency, and they also come into C COM so that we can see where in the school, um, the call is coming from and where the emergency is happening. Uh, with this particular STOP Grant, what we're going to be able to do is add to that platform for that, um, the best practices of school safety by bringing in that anonymous tip line, and also bringing in the case management tool, which helps us work with the, uh, FERPA laws, as we were speaking about, with the case management of these students that are identified to be on the pathway to violence or self-harm. Um, and it helps the schools keep track of those students so they don't fall off of the plate, and we find out later two or three incidences down the road, um, that there was something that was missed because it wasn't properly communicated or reported inside the school. Uh, the other thing that Navigate Three Sixty technology will allow the schools to do with the prevention piece is that case management software, um, will follow the student. So if they decide to use the school choice and switch to another school, and they've been showing these, um, signs of potential for violence or self-harm, counselor in one school can communicate with the counselor of the other school to keep, to maintain some continuity for the student that, um, that is in jeopardy.
And I'd like to add that we've, we've, we've gone through a series of tests. And, um, the test basically is your alarm, so when somebody sets off an alarm, um, the sheriff department and police department can see what's going on in the school. It would say something like the, the teacher, it was name the teacher, which is amazing, where the teacher is, and what's going on. And that, that's on a quick text message. Okay, and what that does, again, that, that creates a safe environment for our county, and I'm hoping that it deters any bad people from wanting to come down here and do anything because they know we have all these things in place.
Yeah, Ms. Clay, you talked about a safe environment, a safe culture, do you have any, uh, real short definitions by, of what you mean by, uh, culture or environment that would help everybody?
Um, a safe culture, a safe environment means that while a student is reading or trying to learn, they're not looking over their back. They're not having to, um, worry about somebody coming in and hurting them. They're not, and if, if, if there's something within the building as far as bullying, et cetera, et cetera, they get training on bullying and stop the silence and all these different things. So it's not just from the, we, we talked about the preparedness, okay, the before the bang, all the before the bang things part of a good school culture. We want our kids to know that they're going to be safe. We want the teachers to know that they're going to be safe, and with that, they can teach, teach better. We have one school, um, in Portal, our school in Portal. There was a time where students would be, students would be learning, and there were illegal aliens pulling on the doors, banging on the windows. Students can't learn, that's what culture is, and that's what a safe environment is. They need to know that when they're, when they're putting their head down to read, that no one's going to hurt them. And that's what's going on in Cochise County, especially in, I'll call them our hinterland schools, those schools that are way out there, where it's going to be a while before somebody can get out there. Those students should have the same sense of safety than any student in Cochise County and, and Sierra Vista and Douglas or whatever. We have to equitably create that same environment and culture throughout the whole county. So that's what we mean by culture, that they feel that they can put everything into learning and teaching and not look behind their back somebody's.
Thank you, Ms. Clay, thank you, Ms. Myers, so that was very thorough, and I hope the public benefited from that. Is there any further discussion?
I, I just want to make a comment. Uh, Tom, I just want to make a comment on the fact of the preparedness and the ability to buy programming, because a lot of times the public looks at the amount of dollars and they go, oh, my gosh, that's a lot of money. Well, these programs have been identified, tested, tried, and, um, I'm certainly glad that we have been able to tap into them because, um, they know what's going on, and now we're, we're being able to benefit, and all the students and teachers are being able to benefit from these programs. Uh, they're costly, but necessary for, uh, the feeling of safety. Thank you.
Here is English, hearing no further discussion, I call for the question, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, none, and that item passes, next. All those opposed, none? And that passes. Next will be item number 15.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move that we approve U.S. Department of Education School-Based Mental Health Services Grant in the amount of $2,785,652 effective January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2029.
I'll second the motion. Thank you. Members of the board, this is again, an augmentation and continuation of our safety, behavior, and mental health program in Cochise County. This basically is going to be over five years, 2.7 million dollars. I would have to say that we were the only county, we were the only organization in the state of Arizona to receive this grant. And I believe it's because of the work we've done prior. And I also want to add that we are the only people, we, we are one of, well, I'm gonna say, we are the only people, organization in this state that's doing safety the way we are doing it. And to the point that Ms. Myers and Sheriff Daniels will be briefing the State Board of Education next year to talk about what we're doing in Cochise County, which is very different. And the difference is that we work together, all the organizations, not just the schools work together. But we work together with the police department and the sheriff's department. We are very different than a lot of counties. And a lot of counties are seeing that. So we, I believe that we are the spearhead in school safety and mental health for schools in the state of Arizona. Just wanted to point that out. But this, this grant focuses basically on capacity. Capacity meaning we need the people to serve and do the jobs needed within the county for student health, behavior health. This is what we've done in the past, with what you have approved in the past. We established, we established partnership with six school districts and we served 18 schools. And, and the green, the green one basically says, these are the things that we've done in the past and we want to keep doing it. But this time, we're going to do it with more people.
And you'll do more schools then?
We, yes. The thing is, what's so great is that we started this, the schools were hesitant. And then they saw the, the meaning and they saw that we were able to really help them. And now they're constantly calling on us for different services. Again, we're not doing their job for them. We are augmenting, helping, filling the gap. And that's, that's creating culture right there of safety. That's creating a culture of you're supporting us. A lot of the small schools are not able to have psychologists and nurses and counselors. A lot of schools are sharing, maybe three or four schools are sharing one person between three schools. And these, again, these are our rural schools. So these are the things we've done so far and the schools are really excited about this program evolving to give them more services free, not at a cost, not at cost. This, these are what the school needs and these are what the student needs are upon this chart right here. The biggest thing with the schools are that we need qualified mental health professionals. Anybody knows in Cochise County, you're not, you're not gonna have them. Those, those professionals are like gold. Most, most people, most of those professionals are coming out of Tucson and Phoenix. They come and help and then they go back. We don't have many professionals that are down here, living down here. That's why we're having a hard time as far as serving our students. And some schools are up for legal issues because they cannot give at times the care that's needed.
And Clay, what certification is necessary to be a health professional with you?
You have, well, we have, you need to be a psychologist or an assistant psychologist or social worker or counselor. Okay? All, all three, all four of those have different qualifications. Psychologist is master's degree and they have to have a certain amount of hours working in the field. And assistant psychologist, the same thing. And then you have your, your counselors. Your counselors are certified by the State Board of Education. So there's a list of things that they have to do. And also our social workers, if they're working for schools, the State Board of Education also has a couple of things that they have to do. You're welcome.
Any further discussion on number, item number 15?
Okay.
Nope, you're not done. I'm sorry.
I'm gonna go ahead. We're gonna be quick. I just, I just wanna be thorough so you, so you know what great things we're doing here. Go ahead.
Yep. And just in the essence of time, I will say, these two grants actually work together. Because if we are able to successfully use the stop grant funding to establish those behavioral threat assessment teams for these students that are displaying these mental and behavioral health challenges and we flush them out and they have these issues, we don't have enough mental health professionals in this county to solve the problems that are going to arise as we start to manage the behavioral threat assessment. So these two grant fundings work together because this will allow us to bring on the professionals to help the schools transition into managing the behavioral threat assessment on their own and to also give them the support services. Very quickly too, on the, on the hiring and the staff we can hire, we can also hire paraprofessionals, which are individuals that come out of college with a bachelor's in psychology and we give them certain training. And I do think that, you know, our challenge is going to be hiring, hiring the higher level professionals. But we will be able to bring in some, some younger professionals who are working their way through their degrees and there is allowances in the funding to help with some schoolings and some other services as well. You're welcome.
Two ladies for giving the oral presentation. That was item 15. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. And Madam Judge, if you care to, the item number 16.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move that we approve the appointment of Gary Douglas, Zachary Foreman, and Nathaniel Redman as countywide justices of the peace pro temp for emergency or temporary coverage pursuant to ARS 22-121 and approve authorization to call upon an appropriately appointed justice of the peace pro temp from another county in extenuating circumstances pursuant to ARS 22-122 effective December 23rd, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. And we have with us, Ms. Flores with County Court Administration.
Hello, Vice Chairman and Supervisors. The court conducted a recruitment process similar to the one for the Benson Justice of the Peace appointment with a selection committee. And following the appointment of Judge Judd to the Benson Justice of the Peace Precinct 3, that left one pro temp available for emergency or temporary coverage. And the justices of the peace pro tempors, they conduct, they aid with initial appearance coverage on the weekends and holidays. They also aid with any need. If the judges are out at a conference, they aid with that scheduling. So the court would like to request the approval of the three new justices of the peace to aid in that coverage and to expand the rotation that we, we have or need. The rotation, the effective date would be December 23rd, 2024 through June 30th of 2025.
Ms. Flores, with the judge selection, you mentioned that was, that committee went before the court and they picked one or two.
Yes.
Has such a selection committee been applied to these?
Yes, a selection committee was applied and it was the same members that served for the Justice of the Peace for the Benson recruitment. And they did hold interviews and resulting, the three listed here, Gary Douglas, Zachary Foreman, and Nathaniel Redman were the ones selected and presented before the committee presenting judge.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Any other questions on this item number 16?
Just that it's only six months, is that typical? Will you make a new selection or just reappoint?
We will request reappointment. For the pro temps, we request yearly reappointment and that follows within the statute.
And that probably.
And that is in life.
Because she got us in the middle of our.
And so the next, the next request would have prior to July 1st.
Okay.
Uh, there's been a motion and a second. We've heard discussion. Is there any further discussion on item number 16? Hearing no further discussion, I call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes are aye and that motion passes. Now moving on to number 17.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move that we approve the appointment of Gary Raymaker as countywide roving justice of the peace pro temp for where no other elected justice of the peace is available or otherwise able to conduct a necessary hearing pursuant to ARS 22-121 effective December 23rd, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion. Yes.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Flores, here, address this again.
As previously mentioned, for this Justice of the Peace pro tempor, we also held a recruitment process and the same selection committee served for this position. The court is requesting the approval to stab, establish a roving justice of the peace pro tempor to aid with conflict cases in the justice court. This is a result of a change of judge for a matter of right or a recusal that a judge may have due to a conflict on a case that arises. In each case, each side is entitled to a change of judge for matter of right. And also the bench, if they have a case that comes before them that they may feel they have a conflict on, they can recuse themselves from that. When that does occur, the case is referred to court administration for reassignment of a new judge. In the justice courts, we do try to reassign the case, keep them on the northern side if it's Benson, Wilcox, and Bowie. And then if we exhaust those judges, then we start moving the case down towards Sierra Vista, Bisbee, and Douglas. And so then that causes delays in the proceedings of the case, allowing, then hearings are continued. So just delaying the process for the individual. To avoid that, we would like to establish this position and any conflict case that may arise from a change of judge for matter of right or a recusal, the roving justice of the peace pro tempor would go to the court where the case is established and they would hear the matter. So it would reduce any delay in adjudication and it would provide timely justice on the case.
Thank you very much. Did I understand you correctly? You said something about the northern side of the fence. Is that what you said?
Well, we have our northern courts. And so if we have a recusal that happens in Wilcox, instead of bringing the case all the way down to Sierra Vista for a judge in Sierra Vista to hear or Douglas and Bisbee, we try to keep it close by, so Benson and Bowie. So it alleviates the travel for anyone that's attending that case. And this would allow, this position would allow the pro temp to travel to that court, hear the case in that court, reducing any delays or any backlog that the court can have because of the case being continued and reassigned multiple times.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Thank you for your continued diligence on this, this matter. Any other questions or discussion?
Well, I've, I've seen JP's being, just like the Benson JP going to the Wilcox court to hear a case.
Yes.
And that was for the same reason.
That was for the same reason.
But having the tempors and especially Mr. Raymaker will just make it a lot easier instead of having to figure out when Judge Ward has a free day.
Right. It'll enhance our process and not only for the court but also for the party that is, that is in the case. So it'll help have that timely service for them as well.
It sounds to me like it's a great improvement and I thank you all for thinking about that process change that, that makes it so that we can do justice swiftly, as swiftly as we can.
Madam English's points are well taken. And if there's no further discussion, I call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The, the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Flores.
Thank you.
Ms. Judge, here to present.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution 24-32 for authorization to submit a grant application and enter into an agreement for home investment partnership program to fund housing repairs for Cochise County income-qualified residents.
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Susan Bronson to address this this morning.
Yes. Good morning, everyone. Arizona Department of Housing has an additional funding opportunity to fund housing repair for low to moderate income residents. We have approximately 16 vetted applications on our waiting list and this opportunity would allow us to provide those housing repairs. So we're asking for your authority to submit an application for this housing repair grant.
Does this be applicable to? Go ahead, Madam English.
I, I just wanted to say that thank you for looking at that because in the low to moderate income, there are a lot of people who need repairs to their home in order to be able to stay there. And thank you, Susan, for finding a grant that we can apply for.
Thank you.
And I, to, to reiterate what, what we've talked about several times, would this be applicable to abandoned property such as Dakota and Hardest?
Unfortunately, it would not. These are owner-occupied housing repair grants. We're just limited by the terms of the grant.
Thank you very much. Is there any other questions or discussion for item number 18?
No.
Hearing none, I call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Bronson.
Ms. Mr. Vice Chair, I move we approve a contract with Pacific Energy Concepts for the installation of EV charging stations in the amount of $594,883.56.
I'll second the motion.
So there's a motion and a second. Mr. Coxworth is gonna present for us today. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. The county was awarded a charging and fueling infrastructure grant from Federal Highways Administration in the amount of $500,000 with a 20% cash match and a total budget of $625,000. The board did approve this grant on July 9th of this year. The board may recall that we were initially looking to install solar-powered units. However, we have pivoted and decided instead to install a more traditional EV charging unit manufactured by ChargePoint. These EV charging stations will be installed at three locations in the county, Wilcox, Sierra Vista, and Bisbee for a total cost of $594,883.56 and some change.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Coxworth?
So that changes it. So are, are they gonna be for charge or are they gonna be free? Okay, so it won't be like, before I asked you, do the people have to pay? And you said, well, it's solar, so it's.
The general public will have to pay in order to use these because they are connected to the counties or the city of Wilcox.
They're gonna be in locations other than, like in Wilcox, we just have the Holiday Inn Express. That's the only place we have EV charging stations. And in Wilcox, it would be downtown, the, the new charging stations. So the location hasn't changed, just they will be charged for it.
That's correct. The locations have only been changed slightly in the parking areas to get them closer to electricity to reduce the cost of trenching and things like that. But you're correct, correct. We are now having to charge the general public for the service.
Mr. Coxworth, I had a question on that. Would be, is there anything remaining that is in the nature of a subsidy for the EV system?
We will, we will ensure that we're charging enough in order for the county to recoup the cost of providing electricity to charge that vehicle.
Is there any further discussion on item number 19?
I, I only want to say that whether, whether or not you. I only want to say that whether, whether or not you, um, uh, like electric vehicles, they're out there. And we expect people to be coming to Cochise County and we can't leave them high and dry. So. Um, I'm grateful that the state, um, highway department gave us a grant, uh, to help us to establish in different portions of the county. So that people then can hook up and, and go to their destinations because they're driving an EV vehicle. We need to accept that and, and move forward.
Thank you, Madam English. Uh, do you care to comment on, on the HERF money and electric vehicles, Mr. Coxworth?
I'm not aware of, uh, HERF money. Generally HERF money is used for surface transportation, roads, uh, but this is from.
Nothing comes from electric vehicles. It has to do with road maintenance. Is that correct?
I don't know.
As opposed to gasoline tax. And I, that's, that's just, uh, in response to.
License registration, maybe. Maybe vehicle registration, but I don't know. That's outside my.
Could initial get advice. So, uh, that is going to be a number nineteen. If there's no further discussion, I call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes. Thank you again, Mr. Coxworth. Number twenty.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move that we approve intergovernmental agreement IGA twenty-four dash zero zero one dash eight nine zero dash one. Douglas Port of Entry dash I, sorry. Douglas Port of Entry P O E Connector Road. Between the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, and Cochise County. To administer the design of the connector road from State Route eighty to the new commercial land port of entry.
Yes, sir. Sorry. Thank you, Madam English. There's a motion and a second. Ms. Jackie Watkins, would you care to address this this morning?
Good morning, Vice Chair Crosby and members of the board. Back in May, the, we were successfully put in for a grant for the port of entry for the connector road. It was an Arizona SMART grant. It's a state matching advantage for rural transportation grant. And part of that grant being that it's federal, some federal funds. The Arizona Department of Transportation will be doing the design. They will contract for the design. And for us to have that money to get to ADOT, we need to do this IGA. So it's a four point four million dollar grant that we have. The city of Douglas is contributing five hundred thousand. And the county is contributing a hundred thousand from our HERF funds. For a total project cost of five million. And at this point, the anticipated design cost will be about four million.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments about item number twenty for Ms. Watkins?
Yeah, it just never ceases to amaze me how much it costs to plan something, especially a road. And I hear people saying, I'm going to build this road and I'm going to make this road better. It's not that simple in real life. So it's a good example.
The design concept part of this project is being completed. It'd be done in March. That was two-year project for like one and a half or one point nine million dollars for the design of the. Design study concept. Now this will do the design and part of this IGA is that the county. Will be acquiring the right of way from the project. With using the city of Douglas's fund from their eight point one million dollar grant that they got from the state. And the, uh, yeah, the total hours for the design of this project is over eleven thousand hours of. Um, consultant time to design the project.
How many, how many miles of road is it again? Is it just one?
One and a half miles of the connector road, but we also have to do work on Highway eighty for connection because the road needs to be raised up. Due to the, uh, flooding that's happening in the area.
Thank you.
Ms. Watkins, I had concern about the, uh, the benefit to the city of Douglas and they, they put a half a million into this from, from a grant they received.
Correct.
And so I'm wondering, uh, what, what benefit does, uh, Douglas receive from this project? Because it's outside the city limits, first.
The city of Douglas is very involved in this project. They will be providing the sewer and water lines to GSA to the port of entry. Um, and broadband. So the city sometime in the future, we're probably annex all the way out to here. So it will be taking the commercial. Facilities that they already have in the city of Douglas, um, on Pan America and move some of those facilities will be relocated out to here. So it's going to increase some capacity that the city of Douglas has in the port.
So the, uh, the city of Bisbee, for instance, cannot move their city limits out there before Douglas does.
Correct.
Why is that?
It would, because you're currently annexed so much each year and it would be, um, a long time for the city of Bisbee. There's pretty a lot of vacant land between Bisbee and the port of entry.
Okay. I just thought of mentioning that. I wanted to make sure that, uh. That Douglas was getting all the benefit that, that they need out of that. Uh, is there further discussion on item number twenty?
I just wanted to add a little bit to that. The commercial traffic has a very limited. Limited space to get into town. It takes up, it's very hard. For the trucks to get into AP and get through the port of entry. And if it wasn't just that, there's a lot of security issues with the port being where it is, right? Kind of almost in town. Um, it's, it's a very congested problem area for security and for the transportation. And the trucks just can barely get through. So it's limiting in a lot of ways. And the city of Douglas is going to be really happy to get that out of the city. That, that whole thing besides to bring in extra, because now they can bring in extra, extra traffic. And extra, extra truck traffic and extra economy building activities. So. Anyway, it's, if you've not been down to the port, you should go down and just kind of wander around. Kind of look at it, drive by at least, look at where things are happening. It's very, they need, they need the space to move people across.
Yeah, it just seemed a little, uh, counterintuitive that it wasn't being right at the truck inspection station, which is already there.
Correct.
So that's why, that's why it kind of caught my attention. Okay, so that was. Number twenty and we have had discussion on that. If there's no further discussion, we've had a motion and this, and a second, I call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, chair votes aye and number twenty passes. Thank you very much. Ms. Watkins. Ms. Judge here to, uh, move on to.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move that we approve amendment one of intergovernmental agreement IGA CTR zero six seven nine three zero. Between the Arizona Department of Health Services, ADHS, and Cochise County Health and Social Services, CCHSS. For women, infants and children, WIC and the breastfeeding peer counselor, BFPC programs. And the amount of six hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and ten dollars for WIC. Sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four for BFPC effective October first, twenty twenty-four. Through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second, Ms. Angel.
Good morning, uh. Vice Chair Crosby and members of the board. Today I would like to request the approval of the WIC amendment. The original IGA was approved last January. Through this, uh, WIC program, uh, we will continue to provide nutrition education. Breastfeeding education and nutritious foods to moms and children up to the age of five years. The only changes in this amendment is the dollar amount which has increased from last year. Otherwise, the services will remain the same.
Thank you, Ms. Angel.
I, I, I think you didn't mention that the reason that it was increased is because we have such a successful program. And we're being recognized for that. So, uh, this, this is a program that we need to keep going. And even during the pandemic and times after that, this program is doing what it's designed to do. So thank you very much.
Madam English's points are well taken.
I have a point as well. Um, I think that we talk about vulnerable populations every now and then. I think that new mommies are about the most vulnerable population there is. I mean, because everything affects them. They're already missing their work or they're. You know, they're trying to get their husband to help them or they're, there's a lot of things and sometimes they're single and this. This was just a bright star. These type programs were a bright star in my, in my life whenever I was having children and I've seen it. Affect my, my children, my daughters when they had children. It's, it's just really important. So, so it's like my favorite thing. Thank you.
Right. Can't beat that for popularity. There has been a motion in the second. See, no further discussion. I call for the question on item number twenty-one. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Angel.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move that we approve revisions to the Cochise County procurement policy as presented in attachments. Effective December tenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second the motion.
Now, motion and second, Ms. Anne Coppola, contracts administrator is here to present for us today. Madam.
Good morning, Vice Chair Crosby and Supervisors Judge Anne English. I'm here to ask for your approval to revisions to our current county's procurement policy. The policy had not been revised since twenty seventeen. Over several meetings, I worked with Cochise County Associate Administrator Joe Casey. And Deputy Finance Director Sasha Dwyer in working on these revisions. Most of the changes are administrative, but I would like to highlight the two biggest changes that we made to the policy. First is to raise the dollar threshold on projects or services that are to be put out for public bid. From fifty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars is a considerably low amount on any kind of project. Particularly anything involving construction. And in researching with other entities in Arizona, other cities and counties, they have already raised their threshold to the hundred thousand dollars. At least a hundred thousand dollars. The other change was the wording and directions on how to do a sole source. The current language is a bit confusing in the policy and it contained a contradiction. So we streamlined the language and that process. Everything else is pretty much administrative and we included the changes as an attachment. So. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions and ask for your approval.
Okay, if you would, uh, just write down this part of the, uh, the manual. It's twelve point three point two point one. And, uh, this has to do with, uh, direct selection, uh, sole source procurement, uh, for legal counsel and so on. So I wonder, has that changed at all to your knowledge?
We did not change that.
Okay, same. Because I, I almost got to looking at it, but I just, I didn't, I had to go to a meeting and I didn't get a chance to look at it. That was. And I do recognize that, uh, inflation, inflation occurs and the price, everything goes up. So. The value of the money goes down however you want to look at it. Uh, that was my only concern was, uh, the sole source and, uh, direct selection. So you said something about one of those, but I can't, but it didn't have anything to do with chapter twelve.
Well, the sole source, we did, we did have a couple paragraphs that contradicted each other. So they were more in, um. Chap, uh, nine point eight point two point three and nine point eight point two point four.
Well, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to make sure you mentioned people specifically by name, but I'm sure that this also passed through like most of our amendments and, and. Regulations do through the county attorney's office. So, so with their approval, I feel comfortable going ahead.
Supervisor Crosby, I just wanted to remind you that there is a speaker request, uh, for this agenda.
I appreciate that. And it seems to me that that was Mr. Okay, Mr. Hyde.
Yes, I just wanted to make it, hi, uh, this is Radford Hyde from Sierra Vista. I just wanted to. Repeat that lowering the number of eyes on major purchases is a bad idea with my money. And your money and all the public's money. And I think we should not raise the threshold on these. Uh, it just seems like a bad idea. Uh, also, I noticed, uh, by reading, reading the paperwork there that. You know, why are we even having a discussion about the possibility of having verbal quotes? I've never heard of such a thing in, in, uh, in state, county or federal government that verbal quotes is even a thing. So somebody needs to probably, uh, consider that, uh, those two items. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hyde. Ms. Coppola, how many people, including yourself, work in your department?
It's just myself. I'm the county administrator. We have one buyer and we also have the property manager.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. I thought I was reading. And so that is one reason why, I, I could see why you'd want to streamline. I appreciate your, your presentation for us. And that was item number twenty-two. There's been a motion and a second and, uh, hearing no further discussion, I call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. And, uh, Madam Judge here to, uh, move on item number twenty-three.
We don't. Okay. Um. Mr. Vice Chairman, I move that we approve contract twenty-five dash zero four dash S W D dash zero one. With Desert Springs Construction and Remodeling LLC for the reconstruction of the Douglas Transfer Station and the amount of fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and second. Mr. Fazio, would you care to address this this morning?
Yeah, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jason Fazio. Uh, I'm the Public Works Director. I'm here today to respectfully, uh, request the Board of Supervisors approve contract. Uh, twenty-five dash oh four dash S W D dash oh one with Desert Springs Construction and Remodeling. For the reconstruction of the Douglas Transfer Station in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars. Do you have any questions?
I just have a comment. I, I know that that, um, facility has been degrading over time. And, um, people have certainly been asking, you know, when is it going to be fixed? And thank you for. Putting it on the schedule a few years ago that, um, that it did need to be fixed, but we had to wait until, um. It was an appropriate time. We can't do it all at one time. So, uh, thank you for, for, uh, getting it on the agenda and, and. We want all of our facilities to look like we care and with this upgrade, that will happen. So thank you, Jason.
Mr. Fazio, would you care to address those issue, uh, issues of degrading and fixed?
Yeah, so the bottom of about six or eight feet is very badly torn up and we're going to go up to about twelve feet. That's where the first purling is. And just reskin the bottom of the building. We have a lot of trash that's getting out of the building. It's just from years of the trash being piled up against it. Uh, machines hitting it, customers backing it, things like that. This will replace four doors and like I say, the twelve bottom, the twelve feet at the bottom of that building.
Okay. What is skin or skimming?
It's the sheet metal, uh, basically keeps the varmints out and the wind out of our material that's in that building.
Okay. How about, uh, safety considerations and how this, uh, this expenditure will enhance safety?
So we did take safety into consideration. In fact, that's one of the reasons our, uh, four doors are being replaced. There are some tracks and some metal, uh, some heavy metal framework that's come loose. And so we're going to go in there and have them replace that as well with this money. And so those doors on the, it'd be the windy side, it'd be the west side of the building. Those will be replaced as well. So we can eliminate any possibility of those pieces of metal coming loose or hitting someone.
Thank you, Mr. Fazio. Is there further discussion? Item number twenty-three. Hearing no further discussion, uh, there's been a motion and a second, I call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Fazio.
Thank you.
And, uh, Madam English, I wonder if you would care to talk to about number twenty-four, which is discussion and possible action? And if not, we'll simply skip it.
Unless. Are they, are they holding legislative policy committee? They're not holding that yet, are they?
No, no, that, that hasn't happened yet. So I have no, no comment on what, what. They, they have committees at the, at the legislature set up, but, uh, there's no actions that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you, Ms. English. We will skip item number twenty-four, delete that from the, uh, agenda. And, uh, report by Mr. Richard Carwach.
Just very short and sweet. I just want to thank our facilities crew. Uh, as we noticed in our office, uh, finally. We have some paint and new carpet and so they've done an excellent job and moved pretty quickly and. Worked around our schedules. So I appreciate them getting that done in a timely manner before the end of the year. So they did a wonderful job. That's it.
And I will pass on my, uh, district one. And I will pass on my District One Supervisor Report. Madam English, do you have a report for us today?
Uh, yes, I do. I, I, I need to say that we, um, hit another milestone this past week. Um, GSA was in town in Douglas and, um, they finally signed the papers to, from Douglas to turn over the acreage that's necessary for the new port. And so that's another milestone that we've reached as well as the, uh, the state working with us on that roadway. So every time we've hit a milestone, whether it's to dig a well or, or any of those things, I just want to point out to the public that it is finally becoming a reality. And, um, and it is my hope and prayer that it will be a, an economic boon to Southeast Arizona and all of Arizona. So again, uh, thank you all for that.
Thank you, Ms. English. Madam Judge, do you have comments for us?
Just, I'd like people to, um, be aware that there are activities in the communities and you should really participate in those. Everything from buying a gift for a giving tree to, to, um, getting ready for Christmas events, volunteer at Christmas events. Those are really hard to put on. Um, they're, and usually they're at night, like parades and stuff. So anything you can do to support your communities, it's, it is the time to give and to love and take care of your neighbors. And I went to just notice why I interrupted earlier with my thank you, everybody, because now there's only eight of you in the room. No, not even that many, seven of you. So anyway, thank you so much and, um, happy Christmas month. I know it's just the beginning, but I love Christmas. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Judge.
And thank you, Tom, and Peggy for taking over when, um, uh, I would be there if I could, but it wasn't possible today. I still wanted to participate and thank you all for taking up the slack for me. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Madam English. Uh, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, December, December seventeenth in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room for a special meeting, and this meeting is adjourned.